Okay, I have 6:33 and we have a quorum of the council. So I will call the Newport City Council meeting to order. And we are starting with a public hearing on the current SWIP plan, the Solid Waste Implementation Plan. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager regarding the public hearing regarding our SWIP plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Laura Dogan, Newport's manager. Wanted to have one last public meeting, not quite a hearing, it's a meeting, to discuss our current solid waste implementation plan. We are required to have two in year five. We did have a meeting on August 5, 2019. Red Shakes, the proprietor of our recycling center was present and gave an excellent presentation. I have pictures. I've invited him back. On July 1, the process begins for our next solid waste implementation plan. The plan is posted on our website if anybody's interested in it. You've got to understand about that plan is that it's mandated by the Department of Environmental Conservation. So we actually don't have a lot of say in the plan. The process for the next plan is that the city council will hold two public meetings on that. And once we get the approval from the Department of Environmental Conservation, the city council can approve that. They'll approve it after we have the two public hearings and we have until November 1 to go through that process. The plan was filed for preapproval this past Friday. So I'm optimistic we'll stay well within our timelines. But having said that, I wanted to just give you an overview. I've got the pleasure to invite Red Shakes back here this evening. He's going to speak for just a few minutes on processes happening at our recycling center, excuse me. Would you like to come over?
Hi. Again, my name is Red Shakes. I work for the city Newport recycling center. Our recycling center is located 551 Congree Street. My partner is Ira Morgan. We work on Sagis from 8 to 12 noon. And again, on Wednesdays, we work from 8 to 4 p.m. When you come into our recycling center, because of COVID-19, we ask everybody to please stay in their vehicles. Pull down your window to speak with us and give us any instructions you want to give to us. We'll take out your recycling, we'll empty them. Anything that we can't take, we'll give back to you along with your containers. It's pretty simple that way. Our recycling center, it's just a recycling center. It's not a transfer station, it's not a dump, so we don't take any kind of trash. It's just for recycling. We're going to be handing out, I've updated our flyers. You can pick them up down at recycling or at least I'm here. It's just going to tell you things that we can take to our recycling center, that we take, what we don't take, how to get rid of those things that we don't take yet. So it's pretty simple there. Yes, we ask people to read through it, try to understand it, just ask these questions when you come in. Some of the most common things we give back to do, the kind of things we can't take, but the most common are any kind of black plastic. We don't take that as considered trash. Drawers, paper towels, tissues, we always give that back, styrofoam. Any containers that have food waste in it or residue is considered trash. Things we do take should be rinsed out, should be cleaned. We accept clean tin cans, clean bottles, jars. We take junk mail, shredded paper. We take magazines, newspapers. We take box boards and we take corrugated cardboard, which we put into a separate bin. We also have a scrap metal bin down there. We take all kinds of miscellaneous metal. We take from nuts and bolts to a metal shovel, from wire, metal fencing to roofing. We'll take stones, refrigerators, we can't take, or we take, I think, like metal roofing. We take a mower, we want to take the oil and the gas out of it. We take a gas grill and a hot water tank. But like I said, we do not take any refrigerator, do not take any freezer or AC, because they have three on them and they have to be recycled properly. We do not take any electronics, we do not take any plastic bags, we do not take food scraps, do not handle food waste. The new flyers are just updated. I will give you a lot of space, you can recycle a lot of it. You can recycle stores or other places around here. There's other things that's in here, how to get rid of your paint cans, to get rid of your light bulbs, if you've got some on or you want to fire extinguisher, batteries, cars, everything. We do have a compost area down at our facility. We take twigs, we take branches, all places, very little twigs. We take mulch, pine cones, pine needles. We'll take your fruits and your vegetables. We'll take your coffee cans and egg shells, but we do not take trash. Scraps will be considered, we don't want any dairy, we don't want no bones in our home. It's just regular, we can tw-. Last thing I just got to say, we encourage everybody to try to recycle. I often say, I hire myself on days where open. We'll go over our flyer with you, answer your question. If you have other questions, you can call the public work department, between 4:00 and 21:00, 24:00. Pretty simple.
Thank you, Red. Want to thank Red so it's good to have him come and speak at our recycling. I also want folks to feel comfortable checking out our website. It's been updated very frequently. We have the latest on food scrap management for businesses, for landlords, for residents. The materials come from the Department of Environmental Conservation. So I also recommend, if you don't find what you're all come for on our website, to check D E C, just search Vermont Solid Waste, and a myriad of materials will come up. Our solid waste site, again, it's mandated. Once you look at it, you're going to think, well, everything is just eradicated, and that's exactly what it is, and it's our basis. So I don't have much control over that. As Red says, we are not a transfer station, we are a recycling center. Not except scrap, and again, there were some questions, so I want to clear that right up. Can you hear me okay? I just want to make sure that people get the resources that they need to. So please check that frequently. Y'all know how to reach me, you know how to reach Tom, how to reach Red if you have any questions. Or do you have any questions for Red before he departs? Are you done? I'm saying, Red, he's going to leave, and thank you, Mayor Minette, for allowing us to do that.
Okay. We'll move on to any, if there's no questions on that, we will move on to the regular city council meeting, which is Monday, June 15, 2020, 6:30 p.m. Once again, it's a remote meeting. I'm going to poll the council members to see who's present, and if you could just say aye. Dan Ross? He was on.
Come back to sleep.
He's on with no audio. So, all right, well, we'll move on. Kevin Charbonneau?
Present.
Melissa Pedersen?
Aye.
John Wilson?
Yes, here.
Hopefully, Dan can hear us. He has no audio, so I'm hoping he can hear my audio and the audio of the council meeting. But we still have a quorum even with Mr. Ross not having any audio. So we'll move on. The next item will be to approve the minutes of June 1, 2020. And I would entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, so moved. John Wilson here.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. It's made by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion on the motion to approve the minutes. Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Next is comments by members of the public.
Yes, I have a comment. This is Ann Shiro.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, back in January, I had asked, and I believe my partner also had asked, that Martin Luther King Day be recognized by the city. And I was told at that time by at least, I think, Bristle and another member of the council, that the union contract was an issue. I'd like to know therefore whether or not the union contract that you're considering tonight includes the recognition of Martin Luther King Day. If it doesn't, I have a statement to make. If it does, I don't, I'm grateful.
I'm not at liberty to discuss the union contract until the council ratifies it.
Okay.
I will not discuss the union contract until we discuss it, and then we have a public vote on the contract.
Well, then, I didn't make a statement at this time. That was a major reason that was given at the time by at least two of you for why you wouldn't recognize Martin Luther King Day. Now you have a contract, and I suggest to you that it should be included in this day and age, in this climate, where minority people are being killed.
Jan O'Leary.
Are being killed by actually the police department or members of police departments, and people are demonstrating to get some equality. I think the minimum that our city can do is to make a statement that we are in solidarity with equality and therefore we will recognize Martin Luther King Day. If it's not included in the contract already, I suggest you hold off on approving it and get it into the contract so that we can move forward on this really important issue.
Okay, thank you. We'll move, any other, any other public comment?
Jan O'Leary. I just had a couple of questions for the board. I recently tried to put my food truck at my property at 646 East Main Street, and I was shut down today, saying that I needed a town permit, which is all fine and I understand all that, but why can't we have a business on our property as commercial zone? And it's private property. I don't understand the concept of that.
Okay, any, anything else?
Do I need a permit if I was mobile? Like, you know, going business to business? And they want me to get a six-months permit, I only have three months left to run my business because it's seasonal.
Correct. I understand.
And if I do get it, where can I park my truck? How long is the, the process to get my application through?
When did you apply for the permit? Today?
I have paperwork, I picked it up today, but I haven't, because I can't see paying $200 for six months when I'm only running three months at this park.
Well, right now, any vendor's permit, you apply with the city clerk treasurer, and then you have, and then it's the city council that approves the vendor's permits. And so the earliest that we would, unless we call it a special meeting, the earliest it would be, wouldn't be until our next meeting in July.
Right.
For a vendor's permit. And so that's the process, because the council has to approve it, and we, normally, we have it on an agenda as a warned item. And so that, so we wouldn't be able to take any action on that permit tonight. First of all, I don't, if you just pick up the paperwork, I don't believe you submitted it to the clerk treasurer, and so.
No.
Nope. See, that's the thing, he would have to have the paperwork, and then he would have to let, you know, myself or the city manager know that we have a vendor's permit which needs to be approved, and we would put it on the agenda usually.
Okay.
Or we could, go ahead.
Once I get, once I get the permit, where can I park it? Can I park it at my house, or does it have to be somewhere else?
Well, that's something that would have to be discussed. I, I'm not, I'm not sure, and, you know, that's something I'm not sure. I would have to look into, oh, I'm not sure about your houses. All would have to be discussed, the location, the location of the truck and things like that. Yes, Laura?
Hi, Jan, this is Laura Dogan. I would ask if you could give us a call tomorrow, and we'll make an appointment for you to meet with our zoning administrator as well as take a look at what the vendor permit requires. You've got my phone number?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Yep, so just give me a call, because what, the questions that you're asking tonight are, we can help you with those and deal with it outside of the meeting. Happy to do that.
Okay. And, and I know, you know, it probably shouldn't even bother me, but is there a way to find out who turned me in?
That's a complex question, Jan, and it's not something that we're going to respond to on the record right here.
Okay, thank you. So is, is there somebody that can come out here and tell me that this is going to be an okay spot for I put out money? I really don't have.
Jan, we don't even have an application yet, so we've got a process to follow, and the best thing you can do is give us a call tomorrow. 334-5136.
5136, okay.
Yep. All righty, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other public comments? Then if not, we'll move on. The next item is a resolution to call on Congress for fair and direct federal support. This was a resolution that I know I had passed along to the council, but it needed a formal vote on it. They're asking all the municipalities to sign on to this resolution. They're working with the National League of Cities and Towns. This, I believe, ties into the conference call that the city manager, myself, along with other town and city managers and mayors and select board people had with Congressman Welch, who, they're working on a bill that would provide direct support to municipalities and cities and towns throughout the country. And I believe I shared the information that I had from Congressman Welch with the council. I don't think I gave it to, I'm trying to remember. I've had so many Zoom meetings lately, it's getting confusing. But I believe, if I remember right, if it passes the federal government, Newport could see money towards infrastructure projects and other projects in the, the current year and the upcoming year. It's all based upon your population and so on and so forth. And so this is just a resolution that the league has put out for all, I know numerous towns of Vermont have already passed it. And so I'm just asking the council for a formal vote on it. And with that, if there's any, if council members have any questions, I guess if not, then a motion would be in order, me to sign it.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Charbonneau. I make a motion that we approve this resolution to Congress and have you sign said motion.
Okay. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Mr. Wilson seconds.
Made by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Mr. Wilson. Discussion on the motion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Ross, you're back. I knew we lost you.
Well, you know what, electronically, I came in, I get the voices and everything, but you can't hear me, and I get a message that says, waiting for presenter to share their screen.
Oh, you must, you probably hit some weird button, wait for, I'm not sharing my screen at all. I don't know what happened, but at least we can hear you now, so that's good.
Yeah, I'm on the phone now.
And with that, the motion passes. And now we do need an executive session for labor relations, 1 VSA 313A, and it would be a two-step motion. And the first, let's see. I'm trying to find the motion. I hope one of the council members has it, with the two steps. The first one, Laura, maybe you can refresh. The first one's premature public knowledge, and then the other one's labor contract negotiations. That's a rough gist of what we need for the two motions.
Yeah, it's premature public knowledge could potentially compromise the situation.
All right, so we need a council member to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Charbonneau. I'll make the motion to enter into executive session to discuss labor relations, either 1 VSA 313 subsection A.
Okay, motion's been made, is there a second?
Dan Ross, I'll second.
Seconded? Discussion on that motion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The ayes have it? And then we would need another motion for the premature knowledge. Laura, could you, okay, Laura, could you read that exact wording?
It's the, it's the motion that says you move to go into the executive session because premature public knowledge could potentially compromise the outcome. I'm paraphrasing, but that's essentially the meaning.
Right.
What's the section of it? We need to put on?
The language is, "A motion for the board's specific finding that premature general public knowledge of the subjects of the anticipated executive session tonight would clearly place the board and/or persons involved at a substantial disadvantage."
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion's been made, is there a second?
Dan Ross, second.
So the motion's made and seconded. Discussion on that? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, opposed? Ayes have it? We are now going into executive session. Okay, we are now back from executive session, and the next item on our agenda is Public Works Contract Bargaining Agreement Ratification, and we need a motion?
This is a move to ratify the Public Works contract and to offer the negotiating team members to sign that contract.
A motion is made by Ms. Pedersen. Is there a second to the motion?
Dan Ross, I'll second the motion.
Motion was made by Ms. Pedersen, seconded by Mr. Ross. Discussion from council members? Okay. Discussion from anyone from the public?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we ask if it was included in the contract about Martin Luther King Day?
It was not.
And what do you plan on doing about that, given the concern right now about Black Lives Matter-ing, the position the state is taking, which is very supportive? How does it look that Newport is not being supportive?
All I can say is, it's not in the contract. They have 12 holidays. This was a negotiated in good faith contract on both sides, and that's the end of that.
Okay, I doubt that it's the end, but okay.
Well, all I can say is, it was just a good faith contract and negotiations, and it was negotiated on both sides, and so.
This is Ann Shiro, and I would say, leaving out Martin Luther King Day as a holiday can never be considered a good faith agreement.
Well, we're moving on. Any other discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it, the motion carries.
Now, Mr. Mayor, Chris Roy?
Yes.
Can you talk about the changes in the new agreement? Is there a raise in the agreement, any major changes?
I'll let the city manager address that. Laura?
Yep. We had a good discussion with the Public Works Union and East 15th and 18th, which is something we were both interested in. And it's a contract that goes for three years, starts July 1, goes through June 30, 2023, and includes a 3% increase. I just got to check one thing. You're with me?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Laura was breaking up, the rate was 3% a year, was that right?
Yep. The total is 3%, 1% COLA, 2.9% cost of living. I'm sorry, yeah. I'll post the contract, I'll post the contract on our website, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
You're back.
We'll move on. The next item is new business. Mr. Ross?
No new business.
Mr. Charbonneau?
No new business.
Ms. Pedersen?
Um.
Mr. Wilson?
No new business.
Okay, I don't have anything. Ms. Dogan?
Just a reminder to everybody to please register for the Committee Update Summit that is scheduled for Wednesday at 6:00. We've done some
Uh, we've done some drive runs. I think it'll be very informative. I posted an agenda on our website today, so take a look at it. Uh, we've got quite a few people registered. We have room for a few more. So please take advantage of it. We're excited to be able to, uh, provide an update for everybody. As I mentioned, the last one was in March of 2019, and even through the pandemic, we've made some progress. So we're excited and hope to share some of our optimism with folks. So please, uh, you can find the invitation on our website, on the city calendar, and I believe it's been posted in the Newport, Vermont, uh, uh, Facebook page. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'm back. Thanks. Um, I've got a, uh, vendor's permit here from, uh, home to school. Uh, they turned in everything except the fee and the liability insurance. I got a call from, uh, I read it, and she's trying to get that as quick as she can. Uh, they were hoping to be in operation on the 18th, but at this point, I think the only thing you can do is if you're willing or want to approve this in lieu of the liability insurance and the fee.
Me?
It'll be out of there, they'll do their thing.
Oh, well, I, I'm a little leery about supporting something where they haven't paid the fee and or have liability insurance. Just doesn't give me a, not so much the fee, but more the liability insurance.
Well, if you factor in, on the situation, they have to have that, they can't operate without it. I'm just trying to say that coming back to the council again, after the 18th. But it's not, you, you guys are making the decision, not me.
I would prefer a com-
They can't.
I don't know how the other council members feel. I guess I kind of prefer a complete application and, and process.
As do I, Mr.
Well, Mr. Wilson did.
Yes, I agree with you. You need to get the package done, then they'll get their top permission.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Charbonneau.
Hmm?
I, I agree with you as well. However, our next meeting isn't for two or three weeks, and that could be a lot of lost revenue for this business. Uh, if, if they submit a completed package to Mr. Johnson, or, yeah, to Mr. Johnson, I have no problem with that. Now, I've been waiting for the next council meeting to approve it. So it'd be conditional approval pending, you know, they get a complete package through. And, and that way it could be theoretically done before our next council meeting.
Okay. Other council members?
So, I'm sorry, so Kevin? Uh, the suggestion is that we do a, um, I can't think of the word. Oh, my God. Uh, but anyway, it's, uh, uh, an approval pending the, um, fee and the liability is brought in, so the package, the application is complete.
That is correct.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thanks.
So with that, does anyone have any, anyone else have anything? If the council chooses to make a motion, they can.
Can we comment from the outside? This is a program.
Excuse me, excuse me. I have it. There's no motion. The council's discussing it. So let us finish, please. Council members, do you wish to make a motion?
Uh, just a question that we think that the, can buy a full, uh, the theme for the application.
Uh, Melissa, you were breaking up on that. I don't think I, so basically, I believe your motion was to approve the application pending that they pay the fee and they, uh, have the liability insurance. Is that correct?
That's what they submitted, that it's a complete package. Yes.
Okay. So that's the motion. Is there a second?
Kevin Charbonneau, I'll second.
All right. We'll open up for discussion from council members? Okay? Discussion?
Yeah, can I comment? This is a really important program for kids. It's free food. It's, and a really important meal and an important service. And they've had very little time to get their package together for the same reason as everybody else, because of all the focus stuff. So if there is a way of being able to get this through before the next council meeting, that would be wonderful.
Okay. Anything else? Then, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Here, the ayes, the ayes have it. So the motion was approved that once they bring in liability insurance and pay the fee, then they'll be able to have the, the, the permit will take effect. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we have a question. Mr. Mayor, Laura?
Who, who, who are the ayes?
I think everybody did, I think everybody voted aye. Did, I can poll the council. Let me poll the council just to make sure, because I, I'm getting a lot of feedback noise. And so I thought everyone said aye, but I'm going to poll the council. So on that motion, um, Mr. Ross? I'm not hearing him. I'm seeing him.
Can you tell him to give a thumbs up if he voted aye?
A thumbs up. I think he gave a thumbs up. Okay. Okay. Um, okay. Mr. Charbonneau?
Aye.
Ms. Pedersen?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so what's your name, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other new business, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Nope? Okay. I thought of something new business. Make sure everybody fills out your census form. I got an email update today that says Newport was only at about 45% compared to, I think, 55 or 60 for the state and, I think, 60% for the federal government. So if you haven't filled out your U.S. census, make sure you go ahead and do that. Uh, that was my new business. All right, we'll move on to old business. I don't know. Mr. Ross will be able to speak if he had any old business. He's shaking his head no. Okay, I can see that. Um, Mr. Charbonneau?
No.
Uh, Ms. Pedersen? Mr. Wilson?
No.
Okay. Um, now, with the, the next, uh, item is an executive session to discuss appointment evaluation of a public officer, 1 VSA 313A3, and we would need a motion to go on executive session.
This is Kevin Charbonneau. I'll break that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I heard Melissa seconded. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, Mr. Ross gave a thumbs up. Then opposed. Okay, Mr. Wilson, opposed. Ayes have it. We're going into executive session.
Mr. Mayor? Um, what is your, what is the position and, um, who, and who is it?
I'm not at liberty to say.
Will you make, make a decision after you're done with your executive session?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to put everybody on hold now.
This line is now on hold.